Bank helps pay for ourselves.
I mean.
Maybe at some point I'll buy.
You get the acting board or something. Cuts the top off of it.
For now.
About it. And you know, if you're not, I'm not.
Should've figured.
Well, you did your best trying to teach me over the last few years.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna be.
You did your best trying to teach me over the last few years.
Yes, right. So, long as you listen and learn well.
Well, you'll be the judge and we are free to speak up.
We are sure to get out of here by eight thirty-nine tonight.
Unless they're gonna object to their own petition, it should be okay.
We're hopeful.
Mrs. Stadolnick said she doesn't like it, so she's gonna object.
Do you want to pull two hours?
Take that, take that.
Three stories, huh?
Is the chairperson just absent tonight and can't make it, or is he still on the board?
Oh, he's still on the board. No, he's just, he's just absent. Dude asked me to fill in as the chair tonight.
Well, I'm very impressed with the turnout for one petition, so thank you very much. I was, I wasn't really concerned about this board.
It's a dedicated board.
Very dedicated.
Well, it certainly wouldn't be fair to you guys if we didn't show up.
We appreciate it.
Have to wait one more month.
We also heard you might take us all out after the meeting.
All depends on the outcome.
I'm sorry, I was the chair, I cannot accept the guy.
It would've been less than fifty dollars.
Right, it's gonna be less than fifty dollars.
Couple of years, we're done, huh?
Ready to go when you are.
Oh, um, okay, any time. Matt, do I wait for the red light?
Miss.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, folks, first of all, I'm Brian Sullivan and tonight, dude asked me to fill in as his chair and go forward. So it's now seven o'clock, gonna call the meeting to order. And they're welcoming the Howard's Board of Appeals on this date, June twenty-ninth. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard and the Massachusetts zoning enabling act. Would like each board member to identify themselves.
Tim Bailey.
James Armstrong.
Chris Murphy.
Ryan Sullivan.
Dave Nonoy.
Joe Beasley.
Thank you. Now, it's also tonight, oh, oh.
Leisha McKenna, secretary.
Excuse me.
No, I'm happy not to talk.
Glad you did that, Chris, glad you did that tonight. As I'm chairing my first meeting, the chair recognizes anybody, anytime that feels like protocols are not being followed correctly. So please speak up, and that includes Leisha as well, Attorney Kroll. You know, if you feel protocols being missed, you know, please speak up. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And bearing not hearing any objections, the chair will also serve as the clerk tonight because the clerk is not here as well. So, as a chair, has the clerk, who'd be myself, to call the first, call the first case.
Brian, you have to read the recording notice.
Public notice.
Oh, you know, I don't think I have that.
You just, so any person intending to record the meeting.
Oh, okay, so, excuse me.
That's okay.
Thank you. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the chair. Thank you for the, you know. Okay, there's a clerk. Call the following case, case number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-four. Robert F. and Patricia Stadolnick. Trustees of Robert R. Stadolnick Revokeable Trust, represented by William D. Kroll, attorney, four sixty-six Route twenty-eight, Howard's Port, Mass. Stadolnick's owner of the property located at two ninety-eight County Road, assessors map twelve, partial W two dash five, in the rural one zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit on the alternative or variance to add a finished second floor on the same footprint of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws three twenty-five dash fifty-two and fifty-four, MGO chapter forty-eight, sections six and ten. The, now I ask, voting in this case will be J.M. Armstrong, David Noe, Chris Murphy, and Joe Beasley. Okay? And actually, there's one little note here before the meeting begins. Chair wants to recognize that this is Jamie Armstrong's last meeting. The board plus the town appreciates, you know, your service and we're gonna miss it.
Very much so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much for that.
Mr. Chairman, you asked me to speak up. You've named four members voting. Are you the fifth?
I'm sorry, I thought I named everybody. Tim Bailey, Joe Beasley, Chris Murphy, Dave Nonoy, and Jamie Armstrong. So I named these five guys here.
Sorry, I didn't hear Mr. Bailey's name.
Okay, sorry, yes, case I listed, thank you very much. Now, I would ask Attorney Kroll to introduce himself and the person assisting you, is any real estate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Kroll from Howard's Port, and I'm representing Robert Stadolnick and Patricia Stadolnick, trustees of their family trust. They are seated to my rear in the, in the audience. I hope you have, don't have any trouble managing the crowd tonight. On your first stint as chairperson. This petition concerns two ninety-eight Lower County Road in Howard's Port, and the petitioners are seeking to renovate the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling by adding a second floor on the same footprint as the existing dwelling. So, no change to the footprint whatsoever, so it doesn't change site coverage, it doesn't change building coverage. The plans, the property is shown on the certified plot plan by J.M. O'Reilly Associates dated April twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, and the building and elevation plans by Graywing Design dated November twelve, two thousand twenty, sheets A-one through A-seven. So, the reason that we're here is that the westerly boundary is ten point nine feet from the dwelling. Put the other way, the dwelling is ten point nine feet from the westerly boundary. The other setbacks are conforming. You can see to that little jog corner, it's twenty point two feet, so that's conforming, has to be twenty feet. And twenty-seven point six feet from the southeasterly boundary, where it needs to be twenty, and thirty-two point seven from the boundary, from the road, where it needs to be twenty-five feet. So the only non-conforming setback is the ten point nine feet. Since they're creating additional habitable space that will be within that vertical twenty-foot setback, they have to have a special permit from this board. And pursuant to the Gale case, if the board sees fit to grant the special permit, it can allow an intensification of an existing non-conformity. So they can intensify that non-conforming habitable space that exists on the first floor by allowing it to go vertically on the same footprint for the second floor. And as I said, the, the building coverage and site coverage will not be affected. It's, the building coverage is currently nine point one percent, and it's a thirty percent max. The site coverage is nine, nineteen point five percent, thirty-five percent max. So the Stadolnicks contend that their intensification of the non-conformity by adding a second story within the twenty-foot setback and adding additional space would not constitute a substantial detriment to the neighborhood, to the entire neighborhood. There would be no substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, or the like, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, and would ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Ask members of board for their comments or questions, and let's start with Tim.
I have no questions.
No questions.
This is right into the neighborhood, so no questions.
It, I've got a couple.
I would be disappointed, Mr. Sullivan.
Again, we're just all part of it here. Subjectly granting a special permit, what is the timeframe for doing the construction?
We're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Stadolnick, but sometime in October?
Yeah, our hope would be to start sometime in the fall, mid-fall.
And when do you expect to be completing by?
Contractors, March, April.
Okay. Now, looking at the property, obviously you're on a busy street, okay? But you have a long driveway, and it seems you have a back area there that might also be suitable for parking or for building materials, I just wanna check on that. Reason why I'm bringing this up is, you know, to find out, particularly on a busy street, that there's gonna be ample area for the contractor to park his, park the vehicles.
Absolutely. We are also open to him parking anything on the lawn if necessary. I believe there's sufficient space.
So, you're fairly confident that when the contractor gets started, all vehicles be able to start, and be able to park any materials on the property?
Absolutely, yes.
And there's no pouring of foundations going on here, no cement trucks? Delivery to Mid, Midcape or Shepley or somebody drop off some lumber or some drywall?
Yeah, so.
Couple of pickups.
So we're, we're keeping the bottom part of the house, and we're just adding the second, yeah, okay, so you're not, this is not a demolition and a build, strictly adding the second floor. Okay. Those were all my questions. David?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Okay. Well, but there are no comments or questions from the, from the audience, we'll proceed here. Any additional questions at all, which I have before the attorney? Okay. Here in the public, I'm going to ask for, make a motion to close the meeting. Do I have a second? Chris? Okay. Actually, I should've asked someone else to make the first motion.
I was asked, I was.
Okay, Chris is, and who's gonna second?
I'll second.
Okay, dude?
All right, thank you.
It, well, means closed, is, are there any additional discussions from the board?
We have to vote to close the meeting.
Oh, absolutely, to close the meeting, it's here, vote.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Okay. Thank you. It's, if no further discussion by the board, and I think, well, actually, I do have a, so, based upon a timeframe starting this fall and ending around April, and the fact that they can park all vehicles on the property, I, I don't feel we need to have the timeframe situation. Okay? All right, so it's, that's just my opinion.
I would agree.
We're all in agreement with that?
Yep.
Okay? So the only, the only stipulation that I feel is necessary is to have all construction vehicles always parked, as well as, in case you're there, all vehicles, the homeowners and construction vehicles parked on the site. Okay? So I have that as probably during the life of the project. So, I think we can do that, and I don't think there's any of the stipulations required. Everybody in agreement with that? Okay. So if there are any more additional, I'll, I'll entertain a motion on the, on the case, and as clerk, I will read it. Case number twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-four, Robert F. and Patricia Stadolnick, trustees of Robert R. Stadolnick Revokeable Trust, represented by, by William D. Kroll. The applicant, the owner of the property located at two ninety-eight Lower County Road, assessors map twelve, partial W two dash five, has been granted a special permit to add a finished second floor on the same footprint of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. This permit is granted and approved, an approval subject to the following conditions. Now, for the life of the approved, the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public street or road. Violation of the terms is conditioned, a special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard, Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to GL forty-eight, section seven, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time. I would like to, I have to read the motion here, I'd like to hear a second for the motion. Actually, anybody like a second, did you second it? Okay. All right, gentlemen, time to vote on the motion.
Nine.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
The motion is approved. Congratulations. You have an approved project.
Thanks, good luck.
Thank you very much. Just, it's just, a little history, just remind, just, I don't know why, I think it's because it's so quiet tonight, was the Board of Appeals used to meet in the basement of the, of the town hall, the furnace room, and you'd come down the bulkhead, and people would be standing, if it was a crowded night, they'd be standing in the steps of the bulkhead. And, and you'd have to speak up because the furnace would kick on every once in a while, and then it would get real hot while it was going, the boiler was going, and, and it was dark, but that was back in seventy-eight, and Dr. John Roche kind of was the clerk, chairperson, wrote all the decisions, and he was a psychologist.
Not that there's anything wrong with that.
Not, not like wrong with that, not at all.
Married to one.
But see how far we've come, now you've got this facility, and it's on TV, and.
So where was the old town hall?
You're in it.
So, this building was replaced?
Was.
It was replaced with this building?
Added on, like they're doing here, and put a second floor on, but this originally, when you come up Bank Street and you look at the facade of the building, there's two doors. And that was two banks. It was Cape Cod Five and Cape Cod Bank, which became Cape Cod Bank and Trust. But you went in one door to one bank, another door to the other bank, and then the banks moved to Howard's Port, so the town bought the property and put the town hall there. And so you used to come in the front, go up the front steps, and you could go right to the town clerk's office and left to the selectman's office.
Wasn't that long ago, really?
It wasn't that long ago, no.
That was the first Cape Cod Five location ever.
Yeah, it was.
Yes.
There are still big vaults down there.
Well, you would know.
Huge.
Yes, there are vaults.
Yeah.
Vaults down there.
Can't really move those once they go in.
Uh-uh.
Yeah.
Anything in it?
Yeah, they're full files.
The gold that the town holds.
Right. Thank you for listening.
Thanks for the stories.
We always look forward to the little history.
Thank you very much.
And I didn't tell you about my father having a construction business and saying that supposedly one of the safes was, they had to get rid of it, and they got rid of it somewhere between here and Howard's Point. So it's somewhere.
Somewhere down there.
All right, good night, thanks for your.
Take care.
Very much. Good luck.
Bye-bye.
Thanks. What's that? Construction board, you gotta run one of these meetings, I'm glad you owned it, right?
It's a lot.
Yeah, that's a check off.
Yeah, you just gotta have a script, yeah, but, I mean, you have the same chair doing it for, how long was he doing, like, ten years? Six years as this chair, was it only six?
I think he's been on the board for twelve years.
Yeah.
He's been six years.
You'll pick it, you'll pick it up quick.
Oh, yeah.
Get through a few, it'll be like riding a bike.
And I know my wife wouldn't be like, hey, can I practice this with you?
Okay. All right, so next one, next step in the agenda is approve all the minutes, we've got minutes from two meetings, but first, let's take the minutes from the Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two meetings. Yes?
I wasn't at the meeting, so it has me listed as present.
Oh, I'll fix that.
That's right.
Twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fifth, yep.
Yeah. And your name's wrong, right?
That's on the.
It's on both of them.
It's on both of them, then yes.
Because I copied and pasted.
Yes. I'm Joe, not Jonathan.
No, you're not Jonathan, so I'll fix both of those.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Actually, what meeting do you say that you were, not, you resigned, the meeting, and it was the April meeting you said that?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, somehow I thought it was last, was last month's meeting. Okay. All right. I was in that, that correction. Anyone else have any comments on it? Okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the twenty-fifth.
Um, make sure you say approved as amended.
Approved as amended? Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have a second. Okay, all those a favor of improvement?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Okay. And the next sort of, the next discussion meeting was June fifteenth, fourteenth, a special meeting?
That's the other correction for Joe.
Yeah, I'll approve, I'll fix that too.
I'm sorry, didn't we do the fourteenth, and now we're doing the twenty-fifth?
No, we did the, we did the fifth, no, we first did the.
Twenty-fifth, and now we're doing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I made a mistake, I was, just to mess this all up. I was present at the May twenty-fifth.
I thought so.
Not present at the June fourteenth.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Don't, I will fix it.
Do I don't need to do?
It'll be a lot more simple when I stop attending.
Don't say that.
So the question is, do you have to redo the?
Yeah, does he need to redo the motion?
Yeah, you might have to redo it.
No, because they're both getting amended.
Okay, they're getting amended.
Okay. All right. So now, so you, it was the last meeting, okay?
I, I think so.
Sure.
I don't know, but don't ask me.
I thought so, okay. So anyways, you were there in spirit anyways, but you were there.
That's right, I was there in spirit.
Sure you were.
All right, now we have the special meeting on the fourteenth. Anybody have any comments, questions, or changes in this?
This is the correction from Jonathan to Joe.
Oh, yeah.
Fix that.
Okay. All right, so with that correction, I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moves.
Okay, Chris? And who's seconding? Okay, all those a favor of improvement?
Hi.
Jack? All right, excellent. All right, under new business tonight, a couple of things, let's see here. Should have my. The, first of all, we talked about, just wanted to confirm that at the last meeting, on the special meeting, we reorganized the board, and it was approved as far as for Al Donahue to be the clerk for another year, and thank you very much, I was appointed as an, as the clerk, I mean, as the chairman for the next year. Okay? So that took place the last meeting. Also a new business, just wanna check, did you, Leisha, check into that, the forty-B, the application letter?
Yep, so it should be all ready to go.
Okay. All right, can you just bring up a final, I know we approved it last night.
Oh, yeah, you needed copies of it, we approved it already at the last meeting.
I think we approved it with changes.
Yep, so it was approved as amended.
So if everyone could have a final, final version?
Yeah, offer your final draft.
That'd be great. And also, if you could, continue to check into getting, process of getting updates as far as zoning.
So I did, I, I did kind of figure that out, so I'm, I might take you up on your offer to help, because it's going to be somewhat time-consuming to make all the updates, all the changes that, all the changes to the bylaws that have happened, we don't have anything, all of the changes are in one pile and the bylaws are in another, and you have to marry them all together.
I don't, okay.
Well, we can talk about it.
So, so there isn't, no one's, the, the planning board's responsible for the, the printing of the, the plan, so they haven't put everything in one?
Planning board has their copy, nobody's done it in the building department.
But why, please explain to me why the copy of the planning board isn't the same for the building department?
So, because what happens is everybody, so you get one sheet, in two thousand eighteen, they printed it out. They printed it out, and you've got your binder, right, Chris?
I do.
You printed out that binder, and then as amendments come, you get just one or two pages that say, take out this section, put in that section.
Oh, I see.
And so it has not happened, and the, the planning, like, some departments keep it up and others haven't, and the, so the copy that I have in the building department has not been updated.
Well, I recall, well, three years ago when I first joined the board, and this is before I actually got a copy when I became a member and was sworn in, I had gone out, I had gone and printed out from the website the zoning rules to the town.
So the website's up to date? Anytime something gets approved, the website gets updated.
So, why can't we just print out the website?
It doesn't print right. You could do that, but it's not gonna print in a way that it looks like, like when, it's not gonna print, it doesn't print the same way that it, when you print from the web.
Print from a web version, not from a paper version.
Yeah, the web version that you print doesn't look the same than the.
Side note, we never even got one.
Okay, so maybe we'll have a group session and try to get it all done.
So, does a town have a department or personnel that's, you know, technically on top of their game, so they could put it in a proper format?
It is in the proper format, it's just it has never been upkept in the building department.
Well, I know that, but the town web, the town website, copy.
Yeah, you could print that out at home, it's just not gonna look like it does here.
Just so I know, what, what might be different?
I've never, I don't, you'll have to do it, it just depends on how it translates on, every computer does.
When I printed out three years ago, what I printed out was pretty identical to what I got from town.
So you could just, you can just print it from the website.
Okay.
It's, it's a lot of pages for any, any individual to print out at home with. And it is, yeah, it's like this, like, so the other thing is that I did talk to the new town clerk about getting updated ones for the new board members, because we don't have any extras from two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's in as well, so, you know, they are the record keepers, and it's up to them to provide the boards with the necessary.
Would it be helpful if I spoke to the town clerk?
I think she, she's, I, she's just new, so she's looking into how they've done in the past.
All right, okay.
So, I got these two supplements.
Yep, so that's it, that's.
Ten and eleven, right?
Mm-hmm.
These are the twelve, do you know?
I'll have to look.
The last one was May of nineteen.
There's been more since then.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have these, did you print out? And I would, at least I'd be able to update mine.
Yeah, so I have, I have all printed.
Yeah, that's.
I can get the updates as well, I can.
Yeah, so I have all the, I had the planning board, Elaine, she, she's the planning assistant, she helped me gather all of the necessary information together, and now it's in a pile, and I have to marry it all to the.
Original.
Originals, yep. And the problem is that yours is in three-ring binder, but everyone else's is bound.
Oh.
So I have to take it out and three-hole punch it, and then marry it all together.
Actually, the one I've done was three-hole punch, but originally.
So yours will be easier, so we can maybe, Brian, if you wanna come in and we can do it together on yours, and we'll figure out how to do it for you too.
Just let me know a good time, I can't do it next week, I, a week after I can come in.
That's okay, we'll, we'll figure out. That's okay, we'll, we'll figure out a time, and we'll get it done.
Yeah, alright, sounds good.
Yeah.
Alright.
Sounds like fun.
You don't know how mu, how long it took me just to get some answers on where.
That must be a service from your new chairman, you know, some helping out.
It makes you help, makes it easier to do the job when you actually have the rules in front of you, though, right?
Yeah, it certainly helps, trying to find them.
Going online.
Yeah. It's there, right? I mean, I'm Tex-Abby, but I'd rather, right there, probably.
Absolutely, okay. That, well, Baron, any of you, anybody have any new business to want to discuss at all? Okay, and again, thanks, Jamie.
Pleasure, thank you. I've enjoyed it.
We were talking, were you, were you a fireman?
I was.
You were, okay. We were trying to figure.
For this town?
Yarmouth.
Yarmouth, okay.
I was actually a fire inspector, so I did a lot of code, a lot of code work.
You know John Clark?
Sure.
He's my neighbor.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Good guy.
Definitely a good guy.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn meeting, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Alright, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Seven twenty-eight.
Sweet. Perfect for my last meeting.
Yes.
Jamie, you got an easy one.